Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, I would like to call order this public meeting of the Johnson County Board of Commissioners. On this Monday, October twenty fourth, two thousand twenty-two at ten o'clock AM. If you care to pray with us, please do, and then we'll stand for the pleasure of allegiance.
Would you bow with me for a moment of prayer, please, dear heavenly father? My word, we thank you for such wonderful weather that we've been experiencing. Dear Lord, I'd just like to kind of recap what Father Todd said yesterday in his sermon at church. That's the two times in our life when we are deeply and richly loved. Those two times are when we're first born and a baby. The second time, of course, is when we become aged and infirm and our family and friends gather around us and share their love with us. And then he sort of related that to some of us who don't get to church on a regular basis, but we tend to make it two times a year. Christmas and Easter, which both kind of reflect back to what his earlier observation was. Dear Lord, we thank you for multiple blessings you bestowed upon us, in Jesus' name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Property crime liability auto workers compensation insurance renewal with Mr. O'Connor.
Morning. Morning, sir.
I'm here today to ask for the approval of the renewal. My building insurance is presented in the sheets in front of you.
Could you state?
I'm sorry, General Connor Epic Insurance Midwest. My fault there.
Just in case we didn't get it. The thing I just wanted to confirm, Gary, and I know we've been over all this a lot, but you and Barb especially. The auto deductible went from five thousand to one thousand on the deductible.
We got that approved, yes.
In four less months.
That's right.
Okay. Just I always need to confirm that when something doesn't look.
Then look right, doesn't.
No, it doesn't, everything went up, but most that went down, so that's really good for us.
Yeah.
And I think that's a great, great addition to the project that we did. I have a motion a second to approve the renewal, any further discussion? And then all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Host.
Thank you.
Motion carries.
All right.
Thank you very much, and thank you for your, all your work you did on it, and I know we had a lot of forms to fill out this year.
Indeed.
And that we still do not have cybersecurity at this point.
At this point, no, and it renews on December first, but it's coming anytime.
Okay, sir, thank you very much.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, thank you much.
Two thousand twenty-three benefit plans.
There's someone here. Hello, everybody, my name's Connor Ganley, I am an account executive with LHD Benefit Advisors. And LHD serves as the benefits consultant for Johnson County Government. On behalf of the entire LHD team, thank you all for your business. I really enjoy working with your team. So moving into the document that is in the handout, first we have the medical plan costs. So in the handout, you will see the medical plan cost per employee since two thousand and nineteen. This calculation takes the total cost that it takes to run the medical plan of claims and fixed administrative costs and divides it by the number of employees that are enrolled in the medical plan. And this is really a good way of measuring costs and accounting for fluctuations and headcounts. When removing the two thousand twenty-two data that hasn't fully matured yet. The plan is running at an average trend of about three and a half percent year over year. This is stellar performance and market trends suggest that we should see increases of five percent to upwards of seven or eight percent on the high end. So it's been a good few years for the Johnson County Government Plan. As far as health plan design, as a result of the favorable performance, we are recommending no changes to the deductible and out-of-pocket amounts. This would mark the third straight year with no changes to the plan design. Additionally, LHD recommends adopting two virtual programs offered by Anthem. The first of those being Live Health Online. Live Health Online is now available for employers to provide to their employees at the zero dollar copay. This program would allow members to seek acute care needs in a virtual setting that ultimately would be cheaper than urgent care and ER or even a traditional doctor's visit. The next program that we're recommending adopting is Anthem's virtual primary care program. This program would cost nothing to members, as do traditional preventative care visits. However, this program would open up access to members and allow them to complete their preventative visits from anywhere virtually. Next, we're going to stop loss, so the stop loss insurance, we are recommending that you all renew with Anthem at a seven percent increase over last year. That comes out to about fifty-eight thousand dollars. LHD did market to competitors to request competitive offers, but ultimately with what we got from the market, we believe that what you have with Anthem is the best offer for you all at the seven percent increase. In addition to Anthem's stop loss, we were recommending that you adopt their gene therapy program. This program is two dollars per employee per month or about ten thousand dollars annually. This program comes as a result of the gene therapy market and future anticipated gene therapies.
I would just briefly touch on that. I talked to Michael, I think originally they were recommended that we didn't do the gene therapy, but in talking to him, basically what this is is this kind of ten thousand dollars is minimal at best in the grand scheme of things what we pay, but what's the particular illness?
Yeah, so there's a handful of these drugs that are included in this gene therapy program. One of the drugs that I believe Mike will probably mention to you was Zolgensma, which treats spinal muscular atrophy. And these gene therapies, they're very expensive, and the manufacturers justify that because they're curative. And sometimes they cure fatal diseases, like in the case of Zolgensma, which has a price tag of about two point one million dollars.
Yeah, up to three million for some of these drugs. And so I thought, and we don't have any exposure to that right now, but we could. If somebody came on board and was subject to one of these illnesses. So I thought ten thousand dollars is probably a pretty good price to protect ourselves against that kind of future exposure. But thank you, I hated interrupt, but.
Yeah, no problem, and by opting into this program at, again, about ten thousand dollars annually, this would prevent Anthem from excluding any members who potentially received one of these diagnoses from stop loss to save you from that high price tag. For prescription drug coverage, we are recommending you also renew with Anthem. While we don't have the detail yet, we do anticipate some minor changes to the formulary and the preventive drug list. For employee contributions, again, as a result of the favorable performance over the last few years, we are recommending no changes to the employee contributions. And for the HSA contributions and wellness exam incentives, those incentives are competitive with what we're seeing in the market, and we are also recommending no changes at this time. For the dental vision and life and disability insurances. Following negotiations, we received competitive offers for all three. All three of those being a rate hold guaranteed through December thirty-first of two thousand twenty-four. Given the favorable results, we are also recommending renewal of all three.
I'm just gonna add, I did a, just a real quick recap this morning. Our expenses are, actually, this is what we've been billed by Anthem up through the third week of this month. We've been billed three million nine twenty-six, three seventy-six. And I compared that to the same period last year, and last year we were really doing good, I mean, we were well, well above our budget there, our savings. Last year we were four million one forty-four, nine fourteen, so we're running about two hundred and nineteen thousand dollars better year-to-date than we were last year, and last year was phenomenal. So just kudos to the employees, they're doing a great job. And I think one of the real benefits that we're witnessing in this roughly two hundred and nineteen thousand dollars is health sake. That's been a great asset for the employees and lowering their deductible and saving costs on services. So I think LHD are a great group to work with, I thoroughly enjoy working with them, and they're very knowledgeable. Occasionally I'll catch them off guard, but not often. Thank you.
Thanks, Ron.
I move to adopt our benefit plan for two thousand twenty-three, second.
I have a motion a second to adopt any further. Hang on, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Host. Motion carries, thank you very much. Rashad I Center in the Franklin Lions Club, the eyeglass donation Christmas tree that we always put here in the West Annex.
Move to approve, second.
I have a motion a second, any further? And then all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Host. Motion carries. Do we have a date when they start putting that up? And I didn't look at it, probably should have.
We don't have a date from them yet.
Nice. Yeah, it's usually on Thanksgiving area. Let's officials department heads animal shelter approval memorandum memorandum of understanding with turning point and approval memorandum memorandum of understanding with assist Indiana pending legal.
Can you give me a little update on this assist with the animal shelter?
I wouldn't have Mike or Kerry.
I just wonder where assist plays into this with, I guess that's my only, my curiosity.
Mike Clark, Deputy Director of the Johnson County Animal Shelter.
His question was, how does assist Indiana play into the animal shelter?
The assist and turning pointer domestic violence.
Could you get a little closer to the microphone? Pull it down, there you go, there you go.
They assist domestic violence victims. And turning point assists go out in the field at times where they are referred to, the victims of domestic violence are referred to these organizations, and sometimes the victims will refuse to leave the volatile situation because they have a pet that is dear to them or their child. And with that, we're trying to be willing to take those animals in for a temporary period of time to allow these people to get out of a volatile situation and then reunite them with their pet.
Okay, no, I just, I wanted to know where it all tied in.
Yes.
I'll move for approval on that.
Second. Is this for both?
So one and two. Yes, assist and turning point on the pending legal on the assist, correct?
Correct.
Have a motion a second, any further discussion? You and then all those in favor signify by saying aye. Host. Motion carries, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is that service provided for free? Dude. Back in the back, is that service provided for free?
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Ordinance two thousand twenty-two dash over dash twenty-three, second reading.
Betsy Swearingen, Director Health Department, just asking for approval of the second reading.
I moved to approve second reading.
Say. I have a motion a second on second reading, any further discussion?
It could be a whole lot, but we're not going to.
Yeah. For sake of time, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Post. Motion carries, thank you. He is looking good, any shares? I appreciate that. This is pending legal, by the way.
Any legal, why Burt's got some kind of share for home wave, just update on our normal contract that will go from forty to forty-five percent on our share from the phone calls.
Move to approve pending legal, second.
A motion a second, any further discussion? And then all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries.
Appreciate it.
And I do want to make note that I have given share, already given the sheriff my no shade November money, correct, sir?
Correct.
So that's why I am sporting, starting to sport very. Starting early. Yeah, starting early and shaving it off early.
Yeah.
Highway certification, yeah, we got several, go ahead.
Morning, Daniel Johnston, Highway Engineer, yes, we have three items on the agenda, and that is the first one, the ratification. Excuse me, the ratification of amendment number one for our contract in dot or agreement within dot for the countywide bridge inspection inventory, there were a couple of clerical errors that had to be tweaked on on the original contract, one being the cycle years, just to clarify that it's supposed to be for calendar year two thousand twenty-two and two thousand twenty-three. And then the second was revising the federal aid eighty percent reimbursement that we were going to, the eighty percent share, excuse me, that was going to be involved with this. The reason was that we actually, the first number was based on estimates, the second number, the new number is based on actual costs. So that was with these minor revisions, we recommend that Commissioner Barrett go ahead and execute that so that in dot could start that process.
I would move to approve the ratification, so you already electronically signed it, so.
Second. A motion a second, any further discussion? And then all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries.
Our second item, this is for our two thousand twenty-two rural neighborhood road repair contract. We are requesting your approval of your meeting on November twenty-first, two thousand twenty-two at ten AM as the bid due date for this project, this is sort of the second portion of the Arbor Funded List of Rural Streets. This is going to be focused on the Nyberg and Southbrook neighborhoods. The level of effort here is going to be more significant, we're looking at reconstruction for these streets compared to what's been going on the last couple of weeks, just building overlay project. So that would be for the bid due date, and then once the bids are open, where we would plan to request that you release them back to us for review and then for potential award anticipated at your December fifth meeting.
It would approve, second.
I have a motion a second, any further discussion? And then all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Host. Motion carries.
Right, and then my last item, this is requesting your approval and execution of a financial commitment letter. This is what, for our funding application to the Indianapolis MPO, it has a call for projects. Right now, the due date is this, the end of this week. The project that we are going to apply for is improvements and widening Smith Valley Road between Peterman and Reston intersection. In terms of the funding, this would be in state fiscal year two thousand twenty-six, so it's kind of an approximate timeline. This, if this project is selected, it would allow us to work on what we're calling the eastern segment of that entire corridor. The west segment between I sixty-nine and the future I sixty-nine and Morgantown is still also our highest priority. If this project is, this application is selected, that'll allow us to work on both segments at the same time and accelerate the improvements to that overall corridor. In the memo I think that you received, we do anticipate this ballpark cost estimate for this eastern segment to be fifteen million dollars. Normally, these applications, we request eighty percent federal or state funding. However, with the limited pool of funding that the MPO receives, we are actually revising that to make our application a little more competitive, we're requesting less. So we are actually requesting five million dollars of state funding for this project for construction. Just wanted to bring that to your, that change or difference from prior applications to your attention.
It would approve, second.
I have a motion a second, any further discussion? And then all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries.
Any, are you still estimating the total Smith Valley project around fifty to fifty-five million?
Yes.
Still.
I have a question also, five hundred West, I noticed that we've got the one lane done, the have they, do we have a date on when they're gonna pay the second line, five hundred West?
Are you south of one thirty-five?
South of one thirty-five to seven hundred south.
They should be working on it this week.
Okay.
Finishing it up.
I know they mailed it, but I had a call from resident said the one side's really, really nice. Just wanted to know when the other side was gonna be.
Yeah, the contractors bringing extra crews this week, I know we've got some weather tomorrow and Wednesday that are gonna slow them down, but they're trying to finish it up.
Got it, no problem, I just, that will give me an answer.
I do know that plants are only releasing so much asphalt per day, same with concrete. I mean, it's getting a little ridiculous, so you just can't get it as you once did.
No, we cannot. Tough. Yep. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Order Commissioners, appointment of the member to Community Corrections Advisory Board. No.
I'm on table again. I think we need to talk to these people, so before we start appointing.
So I agree. I have a motion a second to table, which we've got time, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we're good. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries to table. Ordinance two thousand twenty-two dash oh dash twenty-five, ordinance authorizing distribution indoor expenditure proceeds to Johnson County's grant from the American Rescue Plan Act two thousand twenty-one subdivision road improvements.
Gladly. Make a motion to approve.
Second. We have two, I'm jumping on that one. Motion a second, any further discussion? Do you know all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. Duke Commercial awarded the construction, construction contract for the Johnson County Animal Shelter Edition Project. We awarded this last meeting, but the motion did not state to whom. Duke Commercial was the lowest, most responsive bidder, so we just need to have a motion to award the contract to Duke Construction, correct?
Duke Commercial.
Duke Commercial.
So move. Second.
I have a motion a second, any further? And then all those in favor of Duke Commercial, we say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post. Motion carries. I don't know how we missed that, I just still.
We must have danced all around, but.
Everyone was just very excited to move on, so.
That's probably true, too. Sometimes you just wonder.
Maybe we did it in our meeting, we were appropriating, when I was appropriating funds, I don't know.
You did, I know you said it one time or another, I just, time flies when you're having fun. Claims and credit card.
Oh. I got a couple for the sheriff.
He's gonna make you get.
He's not gonna.
Call you on the phone, you know.
He's not gonna answer you, he's just gonna.
Well, I was just concerned, maybe this was a double billing, I don't know, but they had a claim, the black defense for suspenders for two hundred and twenty-seven dollars and seventy cents, but then we had a Omega holsters for suspenders for two twenty-seven seventy also, I didn't know whether it got built twice for the same product.
What you're gonna see right now, the guys are using the last bit of their uniform allowance, so you're gonna see a lot of those type purchases coming in.
So it wasn't double billing, it was just two, because I thought it was odd that both companies would be the exact same price.
That's good negotiating skills from the sheriff's office.
Sharpen those pencils.
And then I did have a question on credit card dividends and blah, 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 for, there was no, nobody put anything on the manifest what department it went to, but it was the sheriff's department's tennis shoes for a hundred and fifty bucks, but.
One of the SWAT guys, specialty guys.
Thank you, Sheriff. But just out of a curiosity, that's not for the sheriff, but a curiosity, I was looking at Duke Energy's billing. And as an example, juvenile detention, their bill for the month was seven thousand one hundred and twenty-six dollars. The museum was four thousand seven eighty-four, animal shelter was thirteen thirty-three. Courthouse combined was thirty-four hundred. Health Department was a thousand thirty-six. Nine one one, which you would think use a lot of electricity, was only six hundred and one dollars. Park Department was five thousand nine sixty-nine. I know Duke Energy's been raising their rates and all, but and I talked to Jason about it, of course, he's been putting LED lighting in a lot of these facilities to help, but just huge discrepancies in the amounts per month on Duke Energy. And of course, I've talked before about utilities and them being monopolies and we're subject to their service because we don't have a choice. And I'm gonna bring it up again, my first time around, I talked about the fact that we ought to have some way of making these utilities more responsive to the customers' needs and questions. And I got a personal example, I came home the other day and American, Indiana American Water is flushing a fire hydrant. Instead of putting it in the lake in front of my house, they're running it down the yard, flooding my driveway, flooded my whole yard. And of course, I had a verbal exchange with the guy doing it, which was pleasant. So then I called Indiana American Water, and the first time they disconnected me. The second time, they put me on hold, never come back. Third time said, and I wanted to talk to the president, Mr. Pine. The third time they said, just hold and we'll have, you have to answer a questionnaire or something or survey or something to talk to him, and again, they disconnected me. And I tell you, there has to be a mechanism for local governments to make these utilities, people that have a monopoly on the service they provide to me to be more useful or helpful in these kinds of situations, just to prove what we put up with there. So I'm thinking maybe a legal team could construct some kind of a fine or penalty system by which I'll give them an exercise. But it's just, it's just a shame, and I'm sure you've all experienced it over time when you've had a problem and trying to get some kind of response or at least recognition of your problem.
Just for a little information, this is something that on the IACC Board, Indiana Association of County Commissioners, utilities is an issue that we discuss yearly during this, during the state senate and rep session. And a lot of what the utilities are able to do is because they're protected by state statute, which goes through our state representatives, of course, so the only way to make changes is probably to get the state to change the way that they allow these utilities to do. We're fighting over right-of-way issues right now with utilities with the state through the IACC Legislative Committee, so I think in this, that the people just need to understand that there's not a whole lot locally we can do. I, I think in this, that the people just need to understand that there's not a whole lot locally we can do because anything we would do would probably conflict with the state statute would do any changing to that. So I think it's probably what we need to do wisely on, possibly our legal team's time when they get a chance is just to look at those state statutes and see if maybe there's some help you can give me there and presenting this forward to the IACC Board to, to fight. I know we've got two, pretty sure we got two bills on, for this session that we're gonna be questioning on utilities with the state already for the January session, so.
I, I thought maybe locally, if we had the, then the names and the direct contact of these various units, like the president of Indiana American Water, we had his personal member where we could, could call him so that if a constituent had a problem that demanded some kind of a response or help, they could contact us and we could contact them. I'd be happy to hit that up, believe me. I, I'm not interested in being punitive in this. I'm more interested in trying to figure out a way that, that these monopolies could be more responsive to the people's needs. We've all experienced it, so that's maybe something we could think about going forward.
You, you always come down to the same conclusion. Follow the money.
So. Oh, yeah. Well, look at Duke Energy. They've got, you know, they just got a twenty, twenty-six percent increase. Then they come back and got another increase on top of that. I never hear them talking about a decrease in their profits as a, a way to control their their situations and save the consumers. Anyway, I just wanted to get that off my chest. I hope Indiana American Water is online and listening.
Yeah, they, they care so much.
So you're gonna make a motion or did it on claims?
I move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion a second. Any further discussion? Hearing that, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Post. Motion carries. But the reason for a lot of the utility usage being so sporadic though is because like right now at the park, of course, we got the campground going, so.
Yeah. I'm not questioning any of them. I just thought there was.
The museum goes up and down depending on time of year and whether.
Yeah, because they gotta have a controlled atmosphere. I understand.
Which, but that building needs some help. It really does. It's very.
That building needs to be sold and we need to build a new museum, a more modern museum that could maybe serve.
I don't think you're gonna do most convincing on that.
I, I'd be all for it.
I railed again. I was on a council back when they bought that building. That was the old Masonic building there, and I railed against it back then because I said it's nothing but a money pit. And Lord has it proved to be.
And, and if for the staff over there, they have done really well utilizing that space and making it look really, really.
Oh, yeah.
But they could do so much more if they had a little better layout to be able to work with. So if that's something we can maybe start some conversation on, I'm not. Sure. Yeah, that might be, if we could make that happen. I don't know if that's reg, would be regulatory. I would think it could be.
I'm trying to look in the weeds on that.
Trying to improve for public access. So it might be, but anyway, just something to look at. But no, I agree. And I've said that for.
A developer come in and buy the building, put nice condos right downtown, Frank.
And, and you know, it has historic value, so you have, you can only do certain things to it, you know.
The exterior, you can do interior.
Yeah, we wanted to remove that emergency stairway out back up the east side. Their board was at a nightmare. But anyway, but they were good to work with as far as working with us. Commissioners minutes ten ten, two thousand twenty-two, regular meeting for approval.
To approve.
Second. Have a motion a second. Any further? And then all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. The post. Motion carries. Public comment, unless we have some other business. We need to bring forward. You probably come in.
Have I got any personal experiences with the utilities you'd like to talk about?
Car dealerships. Hard screen clear.
Two terms, sir.
Second. A motion a second. We're adjourned. Thank you very much.